Good time.
All right, good evening, everybody. For the record, 5:15 PM, Thursday, November 5th. Time for a special meeting of the Wenatchee City Council. I've called the meeting to order. We always start the meetings with a pledge to our flag. So, Councilmember Esparsa, would you lead us?
Yes, everyone stand, please. I pledge allegiance unified of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Esparsa. And for the record, we have all seven councilmembers here this evening. First item on our agenda will be the consent items, which includes the approval of this evening's agenda vouchers and the minutes from the previous meetings. I would entertain a motion.
And I'll make a motion to approve the agenda vouchers and minutes from previous meetings.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Huffaker, second by Councilmember Bailey, to approve the evening's consent items, including the agenda vouchers and our minutes from previous meetings. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And as we always do this time of the year, we have a proclamation regarding Veterans Day. Councilmember Harold, do you have that?
Yes, I do.
Would you read that into the record, please?
Yes, I will. Whereas on November 11th of each year, we honor our veterans, men and women, who have served our country with honor and distinction. On Veterans Day, we show them our deepest thanks. Their sacrifices have helped secure more than two centuries of American progress, and their legacy affirms that no matter what confronts us or what trials we face, there is no challenge we cannot overcome, and our best days are still ahead. Whereas although much has changed since Americans first took up arms to advance freedom's cause, the spirit that moved our forebears is the same spirit that has defined each generation of our service members. Our men and women in uniform have taught us about strength, duty, devotion, resolve, cornerstones of a commitment to protect and defend that has kept our country safe for over 200 years. In war and in peace, their service has been selfless and their accomplishments have been extraordinary. Whereas even after our veterans take off the uniform, they never stop serving. Many apply the skills and experience they developed on the battlefield to a life of service here at home. They take on roles in their communities as doctors and police officers, engineers and entrepreneurs, mothers and fathers. As a grateful nation, it is our task to make that transition possible, to ensure our returning heroes can share the opportunities they have given so much to defend. The freedoms we cherish endure because of their service and sacrifice, and our country must strive to honor our veterans by fulfilling our responsibilities to them and upholding the sacred trust we share with all who have served. Whereas on this day, on days like this, we are called to reflect on immeasurable burdens that have been borne by so few. We pay tribute to our wounded, our missing, our fallen, and their families, men and women who have known the true cost of conflict and deserve our deepest respect now and forever. Now, therefore, I Frank J. Coontz, Mayor of the City of Wenatchee, with respect for and in recognition of the contribution our service members have made to the cause of peace and freedom around the world, do hereby proclaim November 11th, 2020, as Veterans Day in the City of Wenatchee, and encourage all citizens to recognize the valor and sacrifice of our veterans through appropriate ceremonies and private prayers. In witness whereof, I have caused the seal of the City of Wenatchee to be affixed on this fifth day of November, 2020. Frank J. Coontz, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Harold. And we'll make sure we get that to the veterans. Councilmember Kulaas and I were talking before. Traditional parade due to COVID is not happening. I believe they're gonna do the 21-gun salute or whatever they do off course someplace and then maybe drive down the street a little bit, but that parade with the bands and all that due to COVID is not happening. And when we get to the veterans' lease, we'll ask them if they can give us an update as to what the events for next Wednesday will be. All right, we've got a couple of action items, including appointing somebody to the Housing Authority and then a lease with the veterans, and so we'll have them comment on that, and a lease with United Parcel Service. So, Laura, let's start with the Housing Authority.
Good evening, Council. Laura, Mayor, Executive Services Director. The item before you is Resolution 2020-33, to approve the appointment of Armando Bandido to the Housing Authority of Shalane County and City of Wenatchee Board to fill an unexpired two-year term. So, the term was recently vacated by Mike Leeds, and so that's why this term would kind of fill that gap through 2021. And then at that point, if the council wishes, they could then do a full two-year appointment for Mr. Bandido. Mr. Bandido is a local accountant as well as a community advocate for affordable housing to support local income, low-income families, so his experience aligns well with the mission of the Housing Authority. And with that, staff recommends that the City Council adopt Resolution 2020-33, and I'm here to answer any questions.
I thought we had already passed a resolution on this.
Oh, I told you that it was probably coming.
Okay, okay, okay. I just heard it in another meeting.
We talked about it a couple of times, and I think at the last meeting, I said, hey, Armando had agreed to serve this, because we had a number of conversations about it, and then we finally got the resolution together.
Great. Just making sure we're not doubling up.
Nope.
Reporting him twice.
Your Honor, I'd make a motion that we adopt Resolution Number 2020-33, approve the appointment of Armando Bandido to the Housing Authority of Shalane County and City of Wenatchee Board to fill an unexpired, unexpired, excuse me, two-year term ending December 31, 2021. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Bailey, second by Councilmember Cuevas, to adopt Resolution 2020-33, appointing Armando Bandido to the Housing Authority of Shalane County and City of Wenatchee Board to fill an unexpired two-year term ending December 31st, 2021. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Laura. Matt, looks like you got the next couple items. The first is regarding a lease for the Veterans Hall. For those of you that know, the Veterans Hall has been at the Community Center for the last, I don't know, 13, 12, 11 years, something like that. Obviously, the Community Center is going to become the home of Pinnacle Prep Charter School, and so we've been looking for a home for the veterans, and we had one that we were close to, didn't quite work out, so we've been working with other locations. So, Matt's been working with the Veterans Group and has come up with a location, and we have a lease for you tonight. So, he'll go over it with you, and then we'll turn it over. We got a couple of members of the Veterans Group that'd like to address the council. So, Matt, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. So, the lease would be with the Wenatchee Area Number 204, more commonly known as the Eagles here in town. That building is next to the Buzz Inn. It's got ample parking for the veterans, and it'll accommodate their use really well. The city's responsibility will be for rent, and that monthly amount will be $3,305. The landlord or the Eagles will provide water, sewer, heat, electricity, and garbage service, as well as the larger operation and maintenance of the building itself. The Wenatchee Valley Veterans Hall will provide janitorial service and their own insurance, as well as any, any building improvements. That will be all on the Veterans Group to provide those. So, this lease amount has been included in the 2020 and 2021 general fund operating budgets that were reviewed on the October 22 finance committee meeting. Enclosed in these, you have the Eagles sublease, which we just talked about, some of the main terms, and then also accompanying that would be the assignment of lease to Wenatchee Valley Veterans Hall, which is just stating that they are taking on the responsibility of those items besides the rent. And the veterans, gentlemen that I've been working with, they've toured the site. It looks great, and we're pretty excited.
All right. I don't know who's on the phone, Ron, George, who's on the phone, but why don't you guys go ahead and address the council in some particular order?
Well, I'll let, put George on the phone with you first.
Okay. Hi, George.
Hey, how you doing?
Good.
Hey, I want to thank you guys from the bottom of my heart. The council, Mayor Coontz, and Matt Shales, what a wonderful man, a wonderful young man, a get-it-done type of guy, somebody that I really appreciate. What a gift. Our local veterans with a, with a new hall for Veterans Day next Wednesday, 101 Herald banners flying in the valley. This is a big deal. Mayor Coontz, I remember the first day we talked about this, two and a half, three years ago, and you said you supported us, and I salute you. You do. Thank you.
You're welcome, George. Ron?
No, this is Bob.
Oh, hi, Bob.
I'm just gonna go away. Yeah, you know, sitting here thinking about this, as long as I've been involved down there, boy, it's a long time getting to here, and I can't thank, the veteran community, speaking for the veteran community, can't thank you and the city enough for making this happen. I'll give you the run now.
Thanks, Bob.
I also, on behalf of a large majority of the veteran population, want to thank the city, tell all of you on the council, and you especially, Mayor Frank, that I am deeply proud to be a citizen of the community. I have told people outside of our community what is going on here, and they can't hardly believe it. The people of the valley are ecstatic that we're gonna have our own home and not share, and I just can't say how much you've done for us, and we all appreciate it.
Well, thanks, Ron. Appreciate it. Kind words, and yeah, again, it was the right thing to do for us. We're glad you've got a place that you don't have to share with anybody and that we can have bigger gatherings at, and there's plenty of parking. It works for both parties, so we're excited for you guys, and it's a pleasure to be able to do that. So, let me turn it over to the council and bow our eyes and cross our t's and see if we get this approved.
I just want to say that, I just want to say that this is the least that we can do for our veterans who some gave all for us, and so this is, it's our honor to do this for you.
Thanks, Keith.
I echo that.
You know, it's really, it's been an interesting history with the Veterans Hall burning down, and then us being able to, us, the city's residents, being able to take that insurance money and help use that to capitalize the Community Center, which we built the Veterans Hall there. Remember Ed Hoover, retired Wenatchee police officer, who was United States Marine in World War II and Korea, one of the frozen chosen? Added that up and, you know, got more than a toe in the door, got that going. And then that changed, and now we have this. I think we've evolved really well, and I, I'm really hopeful it works out. And gentlemen, when COVID's done, would you please invite us down for a tour?
Yes.
We're planning on it.
And Ron, and I told you this on the phone today, as you guys are moving out, if you need help, please give us 24 hours notice, so we can help get some staff people down there to help get you moved, if some of that stuff's heavy. And then obviously, Matt has shown you what apparently we own at the Wash Dot Building, and feel free to use any of that stuff there as well, if it works in your building, and we can help get some of that moved as well.
We appreciate the offer, and we will definitely let you know if we need your assistance.
Perfect.
Your Honor, I'd make a motion that the council accept the terms provided in both lease documents and further authorize the mayor to sign, thereby allowing the Veterans Hall to continue uninterrupted operations, and those are the agreements as presented to us.
I have a motion by Councilmember Kulaas, and a second by Councilmember Harold, to accept the terms provided in both lease documents and further authorize the mayor to sign, thereby allowing the Veterans Hall to continue uninterrupted operations of those agreements into this evening's council packet. Any discussion?
All I have to say is that I love these kinds of things that come up at council, because they're just such a feel-good moment, you know? Everyone wants to make the motion. Everyone wants to second it. Yes. It's great.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, gentlemen. Thank you very much for your service. Let's get you moved in. All right, now, Matt, you've got the next item, which is a land lease with United Parcel Service.
Yeah. So, United Parcel Service UPS has a peak season facility proposal to operate on some vacant city property of ours out in the north Wenatchee redevelopment area. They were at a pre-application meeting a week or so ago with city staff and, you know, threw it out there that, hey, we're looking for a space, and they were passed along to the mayor's office, and so I've worked with them over the last week and Steve Smith on a license agreement and some of the terms, and so I just wanted to walk you through a little bit about what it would look like out there. So, the figure that you're looking at is a shot of the old Washington State Department of Transportation land.
Can you bring that up on your screen, or?
Oh, is it not up on the screen?
That's okay. We've got it in a packet. You guys have it in a packet?
Okay.
Okay. I watched, we got it.
So, just south of that, of the warehouse shop building, you can see in green there, it's where they're proposing to park employee parking, the folks driving the delivery trucks, and then people working in the operation loading. So, they're gonna access off SR 285 right there in orange, and then what they have is they have two tractor trailers that will be parked end to end, they're oriented east-west, and the semi-trailers inbound from other regions will come in to the south and offload into those two tractor trailers, and then the parcel delivery trucks will come in in the morning and load up and leave. So, they're proposing to operate, it's also fully, fully contained. They have their own generator, they have their own bathrooms, they don't need any of our facilities or utilities out there, so it's really just the ground space. They're proposing to operate from November through January, from 5:30 AM to, or 5:00 AM to about 9:30 AM each morning. And that's, that's the majority of the details there, and working with, working with UPS on a license agreement, a fee of $4,500 per month was, arrived at for that.
Then they'll have to pay leasehold excise on top of that.
Plus leasehold excise, yes.
Five grand or so coming, yeah. And we, we're not tearing down the buildings, we're still, if things go fast, six months? Five months?
Yeah. I would say spring.
Just wouldn't interrupt any of that.
This will not interrupt that, nope, nope. Nope, no interruption there. Planning and engineering, I've already looked at this, because, right, they went in for a pre-app with them, so it's kind of a known quantity, you know, from the beginning, yeah, so it went pretty smooth.
Yeah, I was looking here, trying to find it, but I can't seem to, but there was some language that seemed like to me that this, this was temporary till they found another place, or is this going to be it for the, from now till January?
Yeah, so this facility, I think they typically are able to accommodate it out of their property that they operate out on the south end, by the, at the foot of Bridge Street.
Yeah.
I think in years past, the need, you know, they were able to use their current space. The need is so great this year that they need to expand that operation, and it just won't fit down there, so, yeah.
So, they're, so they're not just there for a month or maybe two or something, and then going someplace else? This is, this is.
This is just for that peak season.
There was, there was some language, I, like I said, I can't find it, but it confused me a little bit. I thought it sounded like it was temporary, and maybe that, that's what it meant by temporary.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And I don't know what they're gonna do long-term, because this place they're in now is too small for them, and I, I don't know what they're thinking from a longer-term perspective, but obviously with COVID, there's a lot more people shopping online, and so they've got this rush of, and they got holiday season coming up, and they're looking, and obviously, they've done this before other places, because they know how to put in a temporary location and run this stuff through. We thought, we thought it was a win-win for us, because we're not using the land for a while anyhow, so. All right, any other questions for Matt? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I recommend, I move the city council accept the terms provided in the license agreement and further authorize the mayor to sign, allowing temporary peak season operations by UPS on our vacant city property.
Second. A motion by Councilmember Harold, a second by Councilmember Hornby, to accept the terms provided in the license agreement and further authorize the mayor to sign the license agreement, allowing temporary peak season operations by UPS on vacant city property. Any discussion?
Wrong-muzzled second on the motion.
Okay, I didn't.
I don't know if both of us did.
I think you both said it at the same time. I couldn't quite.
Okay, no worries then.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Matt. Appreciate your work. All right, so we have one public hearing item tonight. This is one that is not gonna entertain a vote. It's just part of the regular budget process, where we have to have a public hearing item on our budget and take a public testimony. We'll be actually adopting the budget a week from today, but this is one of the requirements of, oh, that's in the presentation, the public hearing item's the property tax ordinance, I'm sorry. So, we are doing a property tax ordinance tonight regarding the increase in property tax, so that is the public hearing item. So, I will turn it over to Brad Posey, Jack Finance Director.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I've got three items as part of the property tax adoption tonight as part of the public hearing. The first is Resolution 2020-34, which is declaring a substantial need. The state law limits the city, the city's ability to increase the property tax levy to 1% or the implicit price deflator index, whichever is lower. This year, the implicit, the applicable implicit price deflator was 0.6%, so it was under 1%, which would limit us to that 0.6. There is a, there, the city has the ability to declare a substantial need, and I would say that this year more than most in the last 10 years, we have every reason to declare a substantial need, to be able to take the full 1%. The last time this was the case was for the 2016 levy, and the council did, did the similar action. Just for your information, the difference between the 0.6% and the 1% is about $16,000. So, it's not a whole lot, it's just, taking the 1% allows you to, to access that lit small amount in the compounding for years, for years to come. So, that is Resolution 2020-34. Then, should I just go through all three items, and then if there's any comment? The next, the second item is Ordinance 2020-30, to adopt the city's actual property tax levy. This takes into consideration last year's levy plus the 1%, assuming if council adopts the previous resolution, then we'd be able to take the full 1%. So, between the 1% increase and then on top of that, which is not included in the ordinance, but on top of that 1% increase, there's also new, estimated new construction, some annexations that occurred during the year, and then this refund levy, I can get in to explain what it is, but it's something the assessor lets us take based on, based, not miscalculations, but adjustments that happened in the previous year, so that the total levy would go from $4,186,000 for the 2020 levy up to $4,305,000 for the 2021 levy. So, that is ordinance 2020-30. And then the third item is Resolution 2020-35, and that sets the last bond levy, or, yeah, the last property tax levy for the voted 2001 police station bonds. So, just about 20 years ago, we issued bonds, 20-year bonds, and they were passed by a vote of the, of our citizens, and the final bond debt service payment will occur in 2021, so this is the last time you'll see this specific property tax levy. Are there any questions about any of the three, or do we turn it over to any public comment?
So, council, any questions for Brad? I know the Finance Committee has seen this a couple of different times. So, I'll turn over any members of the audience, which address the council in our public hearing regarding setting the property tax levies for the 2021 calendar year. Surprisingly, there's no members of the public wishing to address the council, so I'll leave it up to you guys in terms of whether you want to deal with these individually, or it wouldn't surprise me if you want to do all of them at the same time. I think that's fine as well.
Yeah, it's okay. I would think it would be all right to just do the whole.
Do the whole thing? Okay.
Your Honor, I'd make a motion that the council approve Resolution 2020-34, authorizing a levy limit factor of 101% upon a finding of substantial need. Approve ordinance 2020-30, authorizing an increase in the regular property tax levy to be collected in the 2021 tax year, and approve Resolution 2020-35, requesting the Shalane County Assessor to collect sufficient funds to address debt service requirements of a voter-approved bond levy.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Kulaas, second by Councilmember Hornby, to approve Resolution 2020-34, authorizing a levy limit factor of 101% upon a finding of substantial need. Approval of ordinance 2020-30, authorizing an increase in the regular property tax levy to be collected in the 2021 tax year, and approve Resolution 2020-35, requesting the Shalane County Assessor to collect sufficient funds to address debt service requirements of a voter-approved bond levy. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And now is time for the review of the final 2021 budget, which I think is a requirement of the budget process. Is that not correct?
I don't know that is, yes, sure. It's on, it's on our budget calendar, so it's required.
Okay.
I don't know if state law requires that we have this, but our budget calendar has prescribed that we have this meeting, week in advance of the actual adoption of the budget. So, I just wanted to really give a quick update. A month ago, the preliminary budget was presented to council, and I think on page 51 of your council packet, you can see kind of the middle column shows the 2021 preliminary budget. Those numbers have changed slightly since, since the last look at this. These changes have been reviewed by Finance Committee, and they, the final budget column, the 2021 final budget column, is what will be presented next week to council. There are several small changes that happened. I think most of them were noted in the agenda report. I think all of them were noted, noted in the agenda report. A lot of the, a lot of the adjustments were because we got the ERNR rates after the preliminary budget was, was presented, and so those ERNR, the equipment replacement rates, they were adjusted downward. We got the property tax numbers after the preliminary budget was, was adopted, or sorry, was presented, and so we made updates for those as well. Otherwise, I, I would entertain any questions that the council may have ahead of the formal adoption next week, anything, any questions that you'd like to have answered between now and then, or just if you want. between now and then? Or just if you want?
I'll just, I'll, I'll give the same comment I've given for a while. We, I believe we have an agreement with our police guild. I think we'll see it in the next couple of weeks. So we have a one-year contract extension. Actually, it's a three-year contract extension with our police guild with a wage opener for the next couple of years. So that contract is, will be coming to you, I think, fairly soon. We do not have a contract with AFSCME yet. We're working on it. Brad's on a negotiating team, so that's still to come. Do not have a deal on the jail. We are working on that. We'll probably know in the next week or so whether or not we'll end up in arbitration or not. We're just not quite, not quite there yet. And we are working on some Rivercom. I've met with a couple of the board members and we may find a slight reduction in our Rivercom user fee perhaps. So those are sort of the four, I think, outstanding items at this point. I don't think anything that require us to change in adoption of a budget. The budget is a best guess at revenue, but gives your administrative team the ability to spend on the expense side. So it's really the expense side that we're trying to, to make sure we have the authority to do. And so this gives us the authority. And I think it's well within, is projected and burn a little bit of our general reserve balance. I think most of the municipal governments right now are, are doing the same thing. I know the county's current budget is about $3 million out of whack. And I think East Wenachees is $300,000 or $400,000 out of whack. And everyone is just going to sort of adopt it and use some of their reserve accounts to make that happen. So I don't think there's anything in here. I think our sales tax number is as solid as we can make it. So I, I think it's about as, as good as we, as we can do.
Yep.
So on the expense side, are we assuming that we'll be able to negotiate in good faith with the unions?
Yes.
And are we?
No, we'll, we'll be really close. So, you know, police has some form of binding arbitration, which means you go and it's not quite as favorable as what AFSCME has. So I think we will come to an agreement with the AFSCME folks. I don't know exactly when. Sometimes you get them in December. Sometimes that happens. And, you know, we'll know way more by our December 10th meeting as to whether or not we'll actually have a contract. We may have the framework of a contract by then. So, but we do have estimates in there and the police budget came within the estimate that we had. So I'm, and I'm, I believe AFSCME will as well.
Yeah, we're, we're working with AFSCME. I think we've got weekly meetings set up basically between now and trying to get this on the December 10th agenda.
And they've, they've been good to work with. They understand that we're having a difficult time financially, that there's a pandemic, that our sales tax drops. So they've been, they've recognized, I think, the good work of the city. And this probably is time to take some smaller pay increases and have that discussion when, when things are a little better financially. So I, they've been good to work with so far.
And the jail numbers, are we planning for best case or worst case scenario?
I'd say, I'd say middle of the road. Yeah. I think we're sort of in the middle, Keith. It's, it's.
Mediocre case?
Yeah. It's, it's, we, we just got a ways to go. And I can talk to you offline about it. We're just, we're, it's just a, it's an interesting time. That's an interesting building. It's, there's just sort of a lot that's happening, right? So we've, we've had fixed fee contracts with them in the past. We're on a daily rate now. With COVID, our daily rate populations are really low. So they want to go back to the fixed fee amount. And so if you start fixed fee in January, we're going to write them a check for $1,25,000 to have six people in jail. And so there's just, there's just some things we have to sort of work our way through and we want to be good partners with the county.
I'm just kind of curious where we, where our dart hit for budgeting.
Yeah. So, so we're, we're kind of, we're in the game.
Okay.
But, and so it's, it's, we're, we're just, I'll have some more meetings next week and we'll see if we can, can get this to a, to a spot that's good for both parties.
Good. Thanks.
Yeah. I just want to say I recognize that a lot of hard work goes into this budget. And it's very detailed, a lot of thought. And I really appreciate all that you have done, the Finance Committee and all of the staff, all the directors. It's not an easy process. So, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And I appreciate working with the Finance Committee and, and with the directors here and their staff. I just, for a year that would have proven to be a pretty tricky budget to put together, it really did go quite smooth. And I, I don't, I don't, I haven't come, come across anybody at the city who I feel like is trying to play budget games. It just, everybody's very straightforward with, with their budgets and what they, what their requests are. And it seems to, seems to go pretty, pretty good.
I think having the Finance Committee works its time. You've all sat on it. So you know how people come up from time to ask for stuff that they really need. They don't bring us stuff that they don't need. And the Finance Committee does a nice job of taking the needs into account and be fun, most all of the ones that show up. So I think it's a, been a great process to keep people involved in our finances and, and be involved sort of from the ground up. And so I, I think having those committees has been very helpful. Hopefully it's been helpful to you guys. It's been helpful to me to, to have them. All right. Any questions for Brad? All right. So mayor's report. I don't have that many things. Councilmember Bailey joined us the last couple of days as we've been sort of celebrating our employees around, around the city. So we usually have an employee breakfast sometimes in November, but with COVID, that was probably something we weren't going to have. So we have provided all of our employees with lunch during the week. We provided them all with a little bit of swag. And so I've been to the police department and IT, it was how it public works today. So we gave out our service awards to those. Robbie Richards, 35 years. A few of the folks, detective, oh, 20 years yesterday, detective, not Brett, Evett, Evett. Yeah, yeah. So anyhow, we did all that the last couple of days. It's been great to see everybody and, everybody with masks, of course. And, but we've been doing that the last couple of days. And I think just working on sort of normal year-end sort of thing. So we will meet next week and adopt a final budget. Then we'll get a couple of weeks off and we're going to try to divide the meetings of the 3rd and the 10th into even meetings. So we don't have to be here the night of December 10th till whatever hour of the evening. But I think for the most part, Rob's crew have been, they, the Brant property looks like a parking lot now. They've knocked everything down and they're laying gravel out there and they're going to hope to get some asphalt paves or be able to store some sand and other pieces of equipment out there. So we were out there today. It looks really nice. If you drive by and take a look. So our crews are out there doing that. And I think enjoying it. I think they're having fun out there knocking that stuff down. So I, as I told Rob today, I say that's a pretty good, that was a good deal that we did, even though we probably didn't want to do it. I think for the city, long-term to own that property is a pretty good idea. Councilmembers, anything to add? Anything on your meetings? I did, I will do, I will mention, now that I look at Linda, I did have a phone call from the CEO of Coast Hotels who, they run the Coast Hotel here and they run the convention center. And they're in the process of, obviously the convention center is there. And our contract with Coast Hotels is they will pay the water, sewer, electrical, all of those sorts of bills. And they've been paying them for a while with no income. So they did ask if we would consider paying some of the utility bills at the convention center, not the hotel part. So with some of our CARES funding, we may help them out a little bit. Seems to make sense that if your convention center has no income and the operator is asking for a little bit of help, it's something that you guys will approve at some point. An update on the CARES funding. So Laura and I have gone through all of the applications. I think of the half a million dollars we allocated, we'll get about $400,000 out. So, and I tell you, it wasn't perfect looking at it because we were trying to not only do, get as much out as we could, but do what we thought was sort of best based on consistency amongst types of businesses and those sorts of things. So we'll get most of that out, probably 80% of it. So I think all that stuff got approved earlier this week.
Good to hear that people stepped up and finally.
Yeah. Yep.
Turned in their application.
And some of them got 10s because they were the ones that we talked about that were, you know, the ones that were just totally locked down and couldn't be open. And so we, we, some restaurants got 10. I think some folks in the physical fitness facilities got 10 and the theater got 10. And then we gave out some others and a bunch of fives and some 2,500s. And so we got most of that out into the system.
That's good.
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah.
That's really good.
Yeah.
I was, the last time we talked about it, I was a little concerned about leaving, leaving all that on the table. So it's good that we got, at least the majority of that out.
And Laura did all the heavy lifting. She was working with the port and going through all the applications and all that. So give her credit. And the port's done a really great job of pushing those along and making sure the money gets out because we have a timeframe to get it out. And so they're working super hard on that.
The homeless task force, our meeting was canceled this week. Department of Commerce had gone all the way up the line and approved everything that Glenn and Sandra and Oliver had been working on. And then it got to the director and he said, no. So, yeah, typical state government. Anyway, they have since gone back with another proposal and it has been approved. We are still looking for a site. We did, there was, I think, four, five of us that went down and insured the Honda building. It's too big. It's too much money and needs too much work on it. So it's, it would not work. It just, it's just too much, period, all the way around. So we're still looking. And we're working very hard. The People's Foundation, you all know that they had, were having a public hearing to purchase the property down there on the south end. And now they have pulled it out. Glenn is going back to the churches. The churches are having concerns about doing our temporary rented shelter simply because of COVID. I gave him some ideas, what we're doing for cleaning and everything at the convention center. We have a fogger like what they use on the airlines to clean with, and that would probably solve the problem. So he's going to re-approach the churches and see what we can do. But that's where we're at right now.
Yeah. And we did, last Friday, we did a couple of tabletop exercises with Dale. We did a, what if there's an earthquake? And then in the afternoon, we did what if someone steals all of our computers and wants to do ransom?
Steals all the what?
Do ransomware. You know, where they take away their computer and they want you to give them. So we went through both those tabletop exercises last week. Your IT group does an amazing job when asking about, yes, we have one of those and we have one of these and we have this software that checks for that. And it was pretty impressive what.
Absolutely right.
What your IT department does. And you know what? We still like it that. But it's not for a lack of effort from them and, and trying to, to prevent it with all the work that they do. And I wasn't involved in the earthquake one. So we just, what happens if there's an earthquake, Laura? Did we just?
It's a second cover.
Okay.
Is this theirs?
Yeah. Yep. And I think, yep. And I think other than that, I'm really not sure of anything else on my, my, my list. So we will be next week in regular session. I don't have any items for executive session. So with no other business, we're adjourned.
Thank you, sir.
So for Ruth and Jim, I, I went to Spokane yesterday to, I finished up.